We'll go ahead and get started. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here, Ms. Hutchison, will you lead us in the pledge?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Board members, any modifications to the agenda?
I had one, Rob.
Yep.
I wanted to move resolution, oh, where did it go?
Twelve, twelve?
Number 12, yes. Approval of the resolution in support of Vision 2030 to action item. Thank you.
Sure. And since we have no action items, that'll be action item number one tonight. Any others? All right. Dr. Schuler, recognitions and achievements. Would you please introduce our guests?
Happy to. I'm going to actually start by introducing Mrs. Lori Campos, principal at Wheaton-Warnville South. So this recognizing a state champion is a big deal any year. Recognizing somebody who has repeated as a state champion is definitively a big deal. And so I'm going to hand it right over to Mrs. Campos to get us started with introducing Amari.
Thank you. Good evening. I am excited to introduce Amari, a two-time state champion. And I've had the pleasure of seeing Amari. It's incredible to watch him. I've seen him come from behind and just fly by other racers and runners. But I also want to introduce our coach, Chris Coontz, who's here tonight. He's going to share some of his highlights about Amari as well.
Hi. Thank you for having us. Thank you for having me. Thank you for having Amari. I am not, so I'm a coach at Wheaton-Warnville South. I am not Amari's coach. Amari is coached by Kenny Young, who couldn't be here tonight. And also, I need to say that Rob Harvey could also not be here. His son is having surgery in Pennsylvania. He's a volleyball player at Penn State, having surgery. And so he's in Pennsylvania helping him. But I'm happy to be here to represent track team for Amari. As Lori said, it's a great thing when you're a two-time state champion. What a lot of people don't know is that Amari, as a sophomore, was leading the state meet with two hurdles to go and clipped one. And otherwise, we might have been here for the third time. So, Amari, I've been coaching for a long time. And I told Amari this, I love to watch him run. He's that, you know, when you see someone who's really, really special, it just pops out right away, boom. And Amari's that kid. He's special. What was I going to say? Sorry, losing my thought here. He just missed the state record by .15, which is held by John Schweiger, also of Wheaton-Warnville South. Would have been kind of bittersweet if he broke it because, you know, maybe if he would have tied it, that would have been even better. So, but again, Amari's done a great job. He's a great kid, and we wish him nothing but the best. So, thank you.
Mike, come on up.
And actually, Amari, we were talking about this out in the lobby. But for board members, anybody in the community that wants to see you compete next year, where would they have to go to see you compete next year? Northern. And Amari's going to be playing football at Northern next year, going to be a wide receiver for the Huskies. So, congratulations again.
Any other announcements?
No other, nope.
All right. We actually have one more recognition. As much as Dr. Schuler doesn't like the attention, see, you can tell. We do want to, we do want to point out to our community something that we all know at working with him on just a regular basis, what an outstanding leader he is, professional and person. And Dr. Schuler was named the 2025 Superintendent of Distinction by the Illinois Association of School Administrators. And the superintendents of distinction are selected by their peers based on leadership, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. But, you know, we know him and what he does every day and how committed he is and how much we love working with him. We're so proud to have him leading our district and serving with him. So, congratulations, Dr. Schuler. Okay, the hard part's over. All right. We have one public comment tonight. So I'm going to read our preamble. "Thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school district, and community. It's the board's practice to not directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and the information's explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce the time for each speaker. But to maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up with needed, please include your name, and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kulevitz will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I will respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin." Thank you for investing time to attend the board meeting tonight and sharing your thoughts and encouragement for our district. Our first speaker tonight is Lisa Maher.
Thank you. It's hard to follow those last two recognitions, so, but thank you. I just wanted to, my name is Lisa Maher. I am a resident of Wheaton, and I'm also the Director of Business Services for the district currently. So I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to all of you. It's been an honor and a privilege to work for this district and for the board for over 20 years. So it's truly humbling for me to stand up here tonight. I will be retiring at the end of this month. And as I said, I'm also a resident of District 200. I have always been very proud of that fact. My husband and I have raised our three children here. They've attended Madison, Edison, and Wheaton-Warnville South, and it's been a wonderful experience for all of us. So I just wanted to take this time to thank all of you and carry forward because you're doing a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're onto our consent agenda. Oh, well, superintendent report, I'm sorry. I forgot that recognition.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, well, we're going to start, actually, the superintendent report tonight with introducing the board to our new student ambassadors. So I think I'm going to call up for the last time our current student ambassadors, who I think are going to help us. Huge thank you to our ambassadors. I think we had an opportunity with the board to thank them at your, at your last meeting. But, but beyond that time, they've invested a huge amount of time in the process of soliciting applications, really working with students that expressed interest in the position. And I know that they're proud to be here tonight, introduce the students that they're going to be handing over the baton to. So I'm not sure who's, who's starting from our current ambassadors. Looks like Max, because you're getting ready to get up. So Max.
Hello, board. It's been an awesome, it's been, it's been a pleasure serving as an ambassador for you guys. And it, I mean, I can't thank you enough for all you've done for us and for this district. But for how fun it's been, it comes to time to pass the torch on to the next year. And as Dr. Schuler, you touched on, we had a series of applications, interviews. Terribly hard choice because we have, the people who applied were so talented, but we decided on three incredible students to take our place, student ambassadors representing Wheaton-Warnville South next year. So should, should they stand up as a, all right. So I, I have the honor of introducing Mr. Cameron Miller. He's a game developer. He does chess, Dungeons and Dragons, and coding club. And he serves on our tech crew for our theater department, and he tutors outside of school. And he just does so much more. And just speaking to him during the interviews, it's hard not to see how much he cares for our community and our students. So we believe he's going to make a great ambassador, and it's a pleasure that he can serve next year. So, yes, congratulations.
Likewise to Max. I would also like to thank you guys all for this amazing opportunity. I really enjoyed being an ambassador, and it's truly an experience that I will take with me for the rest of my life. On that note, I would love to recognize Ananya Karbada. She will be taking over, and she brings a very fresh perspective to the ambassador program. As a student who's only been a member of District 200 for this past school year, she transferred schools yet had no hesitancy to become involved in a variety of activities. At her previous school, she was a freshman mentor and a founder of the Computer Science National Honor Society and a tennis player at the varsity level. She's also a camp counselor and tutor for younger students, which shows her true dedication to her community. And then while Emily Farman couldn't be here with us tonight, we are also very honored to pass on the ambassador role to her. She has always been very involved in her district and her community for her entire life. She definitely sees more on the athletic side as a cross-country, track and field, high school softball, and travel softball, student athlete, as well as she does Wheaton Sports Center swim instructing and lifeguarding, and the same for rice pool and water parks. So very involved, as you can see. And we are very excited to have her join the program next year. Wish she was here, but, yeah.
I would also like to extend my gratitude. I have loved this position every meeting and extra event. I loved meeting all of you, and thank you so much. So I have the pleasure of introducing Emma from Wheaton North. So Emma was a standout applicant because of her communication ability and her maturity and her ability to lift, uplift people around her, especially in cross-country and track. She's also involved in our key club, our volunteer group at Wheaton North. And she is also going to be a science club officer for next year. And she is also in the Duquesne Leadership Conference team. So, yeah, that's, that's Emma.
I know it's getting repetitive, but I would also like to say thank you for allowing us to work with you guys this year. It was really a pleasure. And next, I'd like to introduce Yafet. Yafet is our second new student ambassador, and he is heavily involved in the community. He in school, he's in youth and government, Model UN, and he plays soccer. And then outside of school, he works for a pharmaceutical startup. He's a student election judge, and he runs his own nonprofit. We know he's going to do great things for the community, and we're really excited to see what he can do. So, thank you.
So like all my peers have said, this has been a really wonderful position, and thank you all you guys for like your help and for giving us the opportunity to do this and like for caring about students so much that you want us like on the board and like representing us. I have the honor of introducing Gavin Arena. He is not here tonight, but Gavin is a member of our school's lacrosse team. He's also part of our High Schools Against Cancer Club and National Honor Society and ROKA Honor Society. He really stood out to us during his interview. Gavin is super outgoing and very respectful, and like it's very clear that he cares about his community and the district. He actually like sent us all an email after his interview, like expressing his gratitude to even like have the opportunity to interview for the position. So, yeah, I look forward to you all meeting him in our next meeting. Thank you.
Go, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So thank you, student ambassadors. Really appreciate that, and welcome to our new student ambassadors. We look forward to, to working with you next year on some, some important work. Just a few other things that I wanted to mention to the board under my report tonight as well. We obviously started the evening with a recognition of, of Amari, who had amazing success at the state track and field competition. We, we had a fun spring season, even up till last week. It's the first time in 11 years in the district that I remember our two schools meeting so deeply in the playoffs, not only once, but, but several times, as our softball teams ran into each other. Actually, our volleyball teams ran into each other on the final stop before South moved on to state. Interestingly, they split them. So, so we can't, can't say that one side of the town dominated that. North won in softball. South moved on in, in volleyball downstate. Our soccer team at South came amazingly close, penalty kick, loss from moving into, to the final four. So just really an incredibly fun spring of not, not only success, but just a lot of excitement in the, in the community. I had a chance actually last, I think it was last week, to attend the Wheaton City Council meeting, and the city council was talking about these opportunities. So there, there was a buzz that built around the, the community, and it was fun to, to see. Certainly, construction underway. Dr. O'Keefe likes to remind us, we think of the three middle school projects, which obviously are underway and really important. But this summer, we have facilities work happening at 15 of our 21 facilities, pretty significant work. So it is, it is going. We're, we're on target in, in each of the meetings. In fact, if you just look out the, the window at the Whittier Playground, you can see the, the progress there, not only through demolition, but starting to rebuild that. That's one of the two playgrounds. So thank you to, to Dr. O'Keefe, to his team, and to all of our construction experts that, really an amazing operation. I've had a chance to attend a couple of our weekly meetings, especially for the middle school projects, and it, it is really amazing to see the coordination that needs to take place to see those, those projects work. You do have a couple of items coming up on your facilities approval agenda related to, to that facilities work, and we continue to appreciate the board's support of that. Mr. Biskin reminded us this morning that our partnership with the Wheaton Police Department and our first responders, they've brought back this summer their weekly neighborhood roll calls. They were at Lowell Elementary last night, and great turnout. What actually impresses me the most each time that, that that happens, not just the event itself, but there's a great communication that goes out to that school community, not only highlighting what the roll call is, but the importance of safety in all of our schools and the partnership that we have with those first responder groups in, in ensuring that that happens. And so beyond just, I think, the, the opportunity for the community to come together, it's become a great communication vehicle to remind the community of the safety work that we do. Just want to remind the community and the board that our advisory committees, your three new advisory committees, those applications are still open. There's a couple of items under your consent agenda tonight related to the Citizens Advisory Committee and Approval of Membership. But anybody that's not on that list this evening was certainly given an invitation and encouraged to participate in one of those other advisory committees. And I know I've talked to several of, of those applicants that were excited to do that. Want to remind both the board and the community, I think Alyssa shared at our building meeting this morning, we continue the monthly mobile food pantries even through the, the summer. The challenge in the summer, though, is sometimes a little harder to get volunteers when we're not in school. And so if that's something that any board members would be interested in, we'd love to have you at one of our mobile food pantries. Anybody in the community, we could use the help, especially in July and August. Those tend to be the, the harder months to, to fill, again, just because people are kind of scattered a little bit. But those monthly mobile food pantries, in addition to the Weekend Backpack Program, never went away after the pandemic. I'm incredibly proud of the, the commitment to continue to make sure that we're providing food for those in the, in the community that are food insecure and, and need that support. It's, it's really been amazing to continue to see that, that report, that support. And then in your green folder, Mrs. Hutchison provided for you your yearly summary as of this meeting of donations that have been approved by the board. You do that under your consent agenda. And if you flip over to page two of that sheet, you'll see in the 2425 school year, we accepted, or the board accepted, a little shy of a half a million dollars in generous donations from community groups. Those are largely PTAs, booster organizations, other community donations. And again, I say every time, the, the donation and the money and the financial resources are important, but what sits behind each of those donations is just a ton of volunteer time and community support that's even more important. So just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge that and make sure you saw in the aggregate what you've accepted this year, because it's really impressive when you see it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Just on behalf of the board, we want to thank the community and all the volunteers. It's a lot of money, a lot of effort, right? It's, it's a lot, there's a lot of small checks, a lot of small donations that add up to, to a lot of people who really care about what's going on in this district. And it's just so impressive. So we're really appreciative, and we don't want people to think we take it for granted because we don't. It's a really significant part of what goes on, what makes our community and our district so great. So thank you very much on behalf of the school board. Onto the consent agenda. So the items on the consent agenda include the acceptance of gifts from Wheaton North High School Wings Booster Club, approval of the school-wide Title I program for Pleasant Hill, Emerson, Bauer, Hawthorne, Sandberg, and Washington Elementary Schools, approval, excuse me, approval of the consolidated district plan, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared parking agreement between CUSD 200 and St. John Evangelico Lutheran Church. I'm going to cough, excuse me. Approval of liability insurance renewal with CLIC, approval of workers' compensation renewal with SELF, approval of print shop paper bid, approval of zero graphic bond paper bid, approval to refresh district copy machines and print equipment, approval of revision of the Citizens Advisory Committee CAC bylaws, approval of the 202526 Citizens Advisory Committee CAC roster. Excuse me. We're going to move item 12 to an action item. Item 13, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes, May 8, 2025, special meeting, board reorganization, open and closed, May 14, 2025, regular meeting, open, May 21, 2025, special meeting, open, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to January 2024 as law abode by law. An approval of a personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any additional items the board members want removed from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, Dr. Schuler. Any information?
No, I just want to thank you to St. John's Church that, that entered into this parking agreement. That was something that was important to the city of Wheaton as a part of one of the variances for the, the middle school project. And, and that kind of came up at the, really at the last minute from the, the city as something that was really important to them to see that project approved. And so we, we very quickly were able to work through that agreement with the church. And I think, just again, appreciative of the partnership. We've had a handshake agreement with them for a long time. This just codifies it.
Board, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. I, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Kulevitz, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. We're onto the facilities approval consent agenda. The items included in the facilities consent agenda are approval of resolution and final contract for guarantee energy savings with Performance Services, Inc., for summer 2025 middle school capital project work, project issuance one, and approval of the ROE building permits for 20252026 middle school capital projects. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the facilities approval consent agenda? All right, hearing none, Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, the only, a quick comment that I wanted to make, number one, on the facilities approval consent agenda, reason why you're doing that. Performance Services isn't actually doing any of the middle school capital work, but we do want to make sure that the mechanical systems that are put into those middle schools are on the same system that all of our building mechanical systems are. So those mechanical systems give Dr. O'Keefe and his team the ability to see or have visibility into what's happening in each of our buildings, and we didn't want two separate systems running. And so, one, the, the fact that we were able to do this, even though they're not working on the project, is actually a testament to the willingness of our current CM and contractor to kind of allow this little carve out of the project to make sure we could get the controls on the, the same system. So that will be much better for the district in the long term.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the facilities approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Evanson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Evanson? Yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Bladner?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Kulevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're onto the policy posting consent agenda, under emphasize, or overemphasized posting. There are 12 revised policies for approval to post for public review and comment. They are 4.15, 4.80, 5.10, 5.20, 6.150, 7.8180, 7.185, 7.190, 7.210, 7.270, 7.310, and 7.315. Board members, are there any items you want removed from the policy posting consent agenda? Hearing none, Dr. Schuler?
These policies were all reviewed with your HR Policy Committee. These are part of, and I emphasize part of, the most recent press issue. There were a handful of policies that we're actually going to be looking at at our next meeting. So there will be part two of this policy posting consent agenda at your, your next meeting. But the 12 policies in front of you were all supported by the HR Policy Committee to move on for posting.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kulevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Kulevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bladner?
Yes.
Ms. Evanson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Yes. We're onto the policy approval consent agenda, and there's one revised policy for approval tonight, and that's the approval of cell phone policy revision. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No, I just want to recap where, where we've been with this item, just quickly to, to reframe it. Toward the early part of last school year, the board expressed interest in us spending some time looking at cell phone policies, just for context at the time. There was a movement, certainly around the country, lots of states that were taking on revisions to cell phone policies, lots of large districts that were doing that, quite a bit of, of press and I think riding on it that kind of brought this to, to the forefront. I think the board at the time encouraged us to work with CAC to really explore the topic through the school year, and that's what we did. Actually, Mrs. Evanson was part of CAC at that point. As we introduced, we, we read a couple of research articles, had some conversation around it, used CAC to generate a list of questions that they wanted to explore, certainly questions with staff, with students, with mental health service providers. We spent a couple of meetings, really bringing that feedback back to CAC and then getting their feedback on some of the, the policy adjustments that, that we wanted to look at. Our team then took that feedback, spent quite a bit of time with all of our administrators. We, we had talked about it through the year, really to also get their feedback on what was working, what was not working, what some of the changes were that... working, what was not working, what some of the changes were that they wanted to see kind of the impacts of some of those adjustments. And so we then worked with our administrative team to write the document that was posted at your last meeting. Really, two goals out of the adjustments that we made. One was to bring together all of our cellular phone and device expectations into one document that was previously scattered in a few different places. And so we felt it was important for the community to have it in one spot so it can then also be incorporated in our student handbooks. And so what you see in the document that was posted at the last meeting is largely at the elementary and the middle school, a codifying of what's existing practice around phones. There was some additional language brought in that related to wearable devices, watches, any other wearable piece that we really specifically wanted to call out. And I just want to emphasize or mention that there was interest from our buildings in having clarity around that. They were seeing some challenges that they were experiencing and wanted to make sure were addressed. At the high school level, the most significant change really is in defining instructional time and making it clear that during instructional time, phones are off and out of sight. Off and out of sight could mean in a caddy in the room, could mean stored in a backpack, off and out of sight. We did not identify one specific practice for that based on some of the work that was happening at our schools and I think their feeling of success with our current storage practices. So we posted this last month. We provided to the board the feedback, I think much like we experienced candidly on CAC in the conversation, there's a variety of perspectives around cell phone. And as we had the conversation and as I actually looked at the formal feedback that came into the board from this posting, you certainly saw feedback suggesting that we wanted to maybe move backward and loosen some pieces. There was some feedback around the wearable technology watch. There was feedback on the other side suggesting we weren't going far enough, right? With restrictions and expectations, there is just a range of opinions that exist, and that is exactly what we experienced this year as we had this conversation with CAC. So I continue to be comfortable with what has been posted, recommend that for approval this evening, and will remind the board that this policy can continue to be a work in progress in future years. So like you can with any policy, I think it's important for us to have a little bit of time to let this settle this year, but it is certainly something that can continue to be a work in progress as we see, as we learn what's working, what's not working. We mentioned a couple of times, so I think important to acknowledge that the state did not pass the law that they were considering. I've still heard, though, that that is not a dead bill, even though this legislative session ended, there is still a veto session coming up. And I think based on kind of the interest behind that law, as I've checked in with a few of our advocacy groups today, I don't think that bill is done. I think it will likely get passed at some point, potentially during veto session. I think candidly, they just ran out of time, and that was something that the state experienced with a few things that they were trying to fix, that there was interest, they just kind of ran out of time in the legislative session, and they needed to get a budget passed. So again, with that context, we happy to answer any questions, but we certainly recommend that the board approve the cell phone policy revision that was posted.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Board, any comments, questions? All right, hearing, oh, that's me. I wasn't looking.
So I just wanted to say, I appreciate the really good intentions of this policy and all of the work that went in it. I am going to vote against it tonight just because I have hesitations on the process as it relates to smartwatches, that, you know, I was trying to think of what's the process and what are the right people involved. And I think we did a really good job when it came to cell phones, that, you know, we surveyed the high school teachers, had our student ambassadors involved, but when it comes to the smartwatch component and looking back at some of those questions, I think they were directed to cell phones. And so I just worry if we have that accurate feedback to inform this policy, and so I don't know if that's been done yet. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you. Mr. Jerpy?
Yes. You know, I think it is important that we continue to work on this policy, that the community feedback has been resounding that they want to see a policy in place. My concern is with some of the specifics in the policy as it's evolved. So the areas that stand out for me as areas of concern, I think our approach to defining instructional time has not really accounted for all of the community feedback that's come in. I think there's been some, you know, evolution in the policy that, you know, maybe was influenced by some stakeholder groups but not others, and I think there's an opportunity to maybe tighten it up. Things like study halls, access periods, I think we should have an earnest discussion of whether that is time where we want students on devices or not, whether that's time that, you know, educators, parents, other groups want students on devices. I do share the same concerns around smartwatches. It felt like it was almost a bolt-on to the policy work that had been done and hasn't been subject to the same diligence. And a full 50% of the community feedback that came in was critical of the stance on smartwatches. And then the third area is the storage. There was community feedback concerned about connectivity with students in safety situations. We have elements of the policy that call for devices to be stored in lockers power off, and I feel as if that is tone deaf to the safety concerns. That makes those devices essentially inaccessible, unusable in the event of a safety incident. And so for those three reasons, I am not comfortable voting for the policy today. Again, I think community feedback is very clear that there is a desire for a policy. I just think we need to sharpen our pencils a bit more on this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'll just jump in. I do think this is something that if we pass it tonight, we will revisit, or we should revisit. I actually have some concerns about the wearables at the high school not being designated as limited access. I think if we go ahead with this policy, wearables may become more of a problem at the high school level, so we need to ensure, like, what is happening if this is passed. And I agree with Eric that we need to define instructional time a little bit clearer.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the revised CUSD 200 smart device policy procedure as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Ms. Edison. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Ms. Edison?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
No.
Ms. Kolevitz?
No.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes. All right, we're on to action item number one, which is actually the consent agenda item number 12, approval of the resolution to support of, in support of Vision 2030. Dr. Schuler, anything you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just a quick, quick bit of context since we're pulling it out under an action item. So Vision 2030, I would think of this as a strategic plan for a couple of your umbrella professional organizations, the Illinois Association of School Administrators, school boards, we're both involved in it. They develop every, really, it's now kind of 10-year cycles, just a strategic document to help guide some of the policy and advocacy work that they do. Remind the board really in the same way as your strategic plan, when you vote to support a strategic plan, I think you're just voting to provide some direction in the work that's done. Does not mean that you're not still going to vote on any item that comes up that's related to that. So you annually have at the annual conference, Mr. Jerpy's been the representative the last couple of years in this resolutions process, where anything that may come out of this Vision 2030 plan that then is going to make its way into a potential legislative agenda, you're still going to have that process to vote. So I think voting on this does not mean that you are committing, that you will support everything that comes out of these associations, but we're members of both of them, and I think it's important to kind of support direction, even though we may not agree with everything that ultimately comes out as a part of it. So I just want to share a little bit of that context as to kind of where the Vision 2030 plan comes from.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Board member, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I will say that, you know, looking through it gave me pause, but then as I took a step back, I kind of had the realization, anything that is crafted for a state as big and diverse as Illinois is going to fit no one district perfectly. We've got rural districts, urban districts, districts at high levels of achievement, lower levels of achievement. But as you look through this and, you know, some of the aspirational themes in there, things like future-focused learning and career pathways, items we've talked about a lot as a district, things like predictable funding sources and fewer unfunded mandates, you know, things that are important to us, clear performance thresholds and shared accountability, use of data, I think there's a lot of goodness in there. And to your point, Dr. Schuler, there's nothing here binding for us, and so I think if we look past maybe some of the things that are less applicable to our district, to me, the vision aspirationally resonated such that I'm very comfortable voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. Jerpy. Anyone else?
Thank you for explaining that, Eric. When I read through it, so my hesitancy with it is, it does give some very specific examples under its very general goals, and a couple of them I just really don't, I'm not on board with. A complete reform of the assessment system, even if that wouldn't apply specifically to our district, I, that's not something that I support. Some of the funding examples were very specific examples that, again, I don't agree with. I feel this is very, and I think it even ends with saying, the Board of Education urges the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement the recommendations under the three pillars of educational improvement contained in the policy. To me, that would mean that we're urging the Illinois General Assembly to approve legislative changes that they kind of clearly outlined. So I'm not agreeing with that, so that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? John?
One of the things that occurred to me as I read it is some of these things we're already have been doing, which is, I think, a compliment to our administration.
Yeah, that's a great point. Anyone else? Just share, I want to share my two thoughts. One is, I've always talked about, I'm not a fan of when politics enters our school district, and whether that's federal or state or even regional, I'm just not a fan of it. And I feel like this is us getting into a political arena, even though while we still do the lobbying component, I just, it just feels a little too close to me to be a political state, political conversation. There is a lot of goodness in this document. Don't get me wrong, you're exactly right. There's a lot of great work, a lot of goodness. I probably agree with a little bit more than what Ms. Blatter does, but, you know, there's good topics that we've already talked about. It just feels to me like, I'm not sure the IASB needs us to reinforce, you know, their vision. And while I agree with most of it, it just feels political, and so I'm actually going to vote no on this one tonight for that reason. Anyone else? All right. So let's see. So board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution in support of Vision 2030.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kolevitz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jerpy. He won. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
No.
Ms. Edison?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
No. Thank you. Oral reports, we have one oral report tonight. It is the 2025-26 Communications Community Engagement Work Plan. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so we're taking a little piece of July and moving it up to June, and I'm going to let Mrs. Berry talk through a couple of things from where she's at. You don't have to come up to the podium. I think you'd rather stay there, which I understand. So annually in July, the board has an opportunity to review priorities we establish in our work plans for the upcoming year. Those come typically from items off of your Vision 2026 strategic plan, feedback from the board through the previous year's evaluation cycle and feedback, and then obviously responses to data points on our dashboard. So outcomes from the previous year help us to focus our efforts for the upcoming year and areas that we need to improve. And we put that together in a work plan. Certainly, the work plan does not capture every project or every piece of work that we're going to take on in the upcoming year, but it's really intended to provide for the board kind of a high-level summary of really where our focus is going to be, which, again, is important just to make sure we understand for the organization what's on the plate and what the priorities are that we're going to work through. Those are usually presented in July, so the board has a chance to ask questions, continue to ask questions throughout the month of July, and then we'll come back to it one final time in August to answer any additional questions and ultimately ask the board to give a blessing to that work plan for the upcoming year. So we're going to pull just one piece out, and that's the work plan priorities that are going to come out of our communications and community engagement department. So Mrs. Berry, I'm going to let you make a couple of comments on work plan priorities.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me do this a little early, prior to my maternity leave. You heard from me very recently on kind of what we did this past year, so I'm just going to highlight some of the bigger items for this upcoming year. So one of the first lifts that will actually start this week is we will be doing consistent construction updates, so that does not only include at the middle school. While that's very exciting, we are going to be talking about some of the work that we're doing with Sherman Durgis and keeping the community updated there. I just want to call out, especially with the middle school updates that will be starting this week, we do have a former student who just graduated this past few weeks here from Wheaton North, who is actually going to be interning and will be supporting that work, helping us capture that. So that's just a really cool opportunity for our community in the way that we are working with our career pathways and providing opportunities for our students within the community. So I just want to point out that nice little fact there. Another area that we will be working on in the next year is we did a lot of work this year with digital communications, with newsletters. So we developed that new district newsletter that we send about every other week, and then looked at our building-level newsletters. We also know there is a need for print newsletters. We have many people in our community that don't have kids in our schools anymore, so we need to keep them informed. So we will be working on those print newsletters and sending those two times a year, hopefully. And then another big lift is, we have talked about a lot at the board table, is our new parent advisory committees. So we will be continuing to, you know, really take in community support and seeing what they, how they can help us continue our work of our district. And so we will continue to roll that out. We have about, I think I checked this morning, we're about 40 or 45 applications, so we have a lot of interest, and we want to welcome them in. Another big thing is our rooms rollout. So we have been doing some work with rooms. Sorry, I'm out of breath. So with rooms, we are looking for a two-way communication platform that meets our SOPA compliance and FOIA, and also gives a tool for our community to find information within one app. So right now, we have a lot of different apps that are out there, and parents have to know, okay, I have this elementary school that's using this, the middle school I'm using something different. So we want a unified platform. So we are working to develop, how can we roll this out district-wide in the best way possible? So we will be developing that plan over the next 12 months or so, so there'll be definitely a lot more information on that. But we want to focus on training for not only our staff, but also our parents. Any questions on that before I move into some of our more, like, communication stuff within our audit?
I have one question. So have you, so rooms was rolled out with some athletic departments this past year. Have you received feedback from coaches and parents?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. So some background, so we piloted rooms at the high school with athletics and activities, and that did happen at both high schools. It was a year-long pilot. We did ask for some feedback from both staff, students, and parents, and we looked at that feedback, and there was definitely some need for improvement, both on a training aspect and from just the app itself. And so that's why we are being so intentional in rolling this out slowly, so that we make sure our students, staff, and families are well-trained. And then the provider of rooms, they have already made improvements that address a lot of the concerns. improvements that address a lot of the concerns. Yep. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the next strategy. So, we, last summer, did our district-level communications audit. And we spent a lot of time, as I mentioned, looking into that audit and identifying areas that we wanted to prioritize or we could work. And within that, we did a look at our external communications, looking at our newsletters for the district and for those schools. But now, it's time to buckle down and do some work for internally. So, we want to do kind of the same thing that we did with our community and survey our staff and see how they feel about our internal communications at both the building level and at the district level. So, we will be doing that when I come back in November. And then, we also, from that, realized that there might be some work that we need to do with branding. So, some of our buildings, the guidelines with how we use our logos are a little loose. We need to make sure that we have more official guidelines with that, that we are protecting ourselves and our brand, and make sure that we kind of formalize that. Any questions around that?
Alyssa, you just mentioned, so we started that work with the three middle schools because of the amount we're investing in the revamp of those. You want to just mention that quickly?
Yeah, so, what you will find with buildings who have been around for a long time, logos kind of change over the years. And so, it provided an opportunity to look at our logos and say, what is our true brand? What are we, stand for? What are our buildings, you know, what is most commonly used? And so, for example, at Franklin, we had, like, six different versions of the bulldog. There was not a consistent brand. So, we took some time and kind of revamped that bulldog. So, you will see a new logo rolling out here. And why that was important at the middle school level is with the construction, you see a lot of times that that logo will be put, let's say, in the floors right when you walk in, on a window. So, we want to make sure that's consistent, and they know who we are. So, we did that at Franklin Monroe, and then we'll be working on that at Esen.
So, when we talk about rooms or a communications platform or branding, and kind of any one of these topics, and I don't think it rises to the level of policy, but how do we, how should we think about adoption, and I'll use the word loosely, compliance, right, for, I'm thinking especially the platform, right, because there's a safety aspect to the rooms. That's why I'm a little more thinking about that in terms, versus the brands. I'm not as passionate about that in terms of policy. But should we think about it rising to the level of a policy or more of an operational procedure or a guideline as we explore that?
Yeah, so, one, there are some elements of that that actually are tied to the social media, digital communication guidelines that we actually developed this year and spent time with the HR Policy Committee. That was actually the impetus of getting to that platform was that we recognized, especially at the high school, there's a lot of individual communication that has to take place in order to let all those activities happen, right? I think, you heard the student ambassadors tonight, that's only, you know, that's four of the six ambassadors that were here that highlighted all the stuff that they're involved in. There's just, there's a tremendous amount of communication. So, that drove it, was that we wanted to have a safe platform, too. There have been a lot of movements in that kind of SOPA compliance area that we do have to make sure that any of the communication platforms we're currently using are fully compliant with the SOPA regulations. And then, really most important, as we talk about all those pieces, we recognize that, while it may be a single staff member that's thinking about what works best for this one particular activity or classroom that I'm involved in, you as a parent might have 15 of those. And so, we did, as we kind of tried to solve that first problem, recognized an opportunity to also really try to simplify that communications platform to get everybody there. I think, as Alyssa mentioned, I think initially, as we thought about the rollout, we really had an eye on this year coming up to try to get to that. But I think some of the feedback from last year just caused us to recognize, well, we obviously are still going to be complying with all the SOPA regulations and those pieces. So, we're not putting it in a vulnerable spot there. We need to make sure that this gets rolled out in the right way with the right amount of training and actually just capacity building at the front end. And so, we want that time through next year to really set that foundation and be ready at this time next year to confidently tell you that we're ready to move that across the system to not only meet all those pieces, but optimize communication. So, to your question, Rob, there are some policies that I think sit adjacent to this. I don't know that rooms itself is going to have to be codified in policy, but we're going to obviously have to continue to make sure all of your related pieces. There is actually a policy on the branding piece, in that, I think, Section 8 of your policy manual, you do have a policy that talks about use of a district brand or a district name, and the fact that somebody needs to actually get permission. It's a little tough to really enforce that policy if you don't actually have a consistent singular brand. So, once we have a consistent, singular identified brand, then it's a little bit easier to really make sure that we actually can support that. And that's everything from just use of that in apparel or things like that. But it's also in community-based organizations that very intentionally will want to use District 200, or Wheaton North, or Wheaton Warrenville South in identifying who they are. And we can, I think, better kind of enforce the fact that there, you don't have a policy that says you can't do that, but you do need to come talk to us about what is your organization, what are you doing, and can I have permission to do that before you just create a Facebook group and say, I'm the, we're the Wheaton Warrenville South, so-and-so.
Thank, yeah, thank you. Perfect.
I would just add to that, too. You know, Dr. Schuler did a great job of explaining that this will all fall under the SOPA compliance or things that we are using. Staff will continue to use what is SOPA compliant. But another big need, as I mentioned, was that there are just so many tools out there, and parents have a hard time of remembering what's going where. I just finished one-on-one meetings with our principals today to go over those newsletter survey results. And we saw time and time again in there that the community really enjoys the newsletters and all the communication that we give them. But they did say, there is so much coming out that sometimes they have a hard time figuring out what is important and where to follow. So, our hope is that this will also bridge some of that gap at the classroom level, because, again, it's going to be all in that one singular app, and everything already syncs with our student information system. So, it should be pretty seamless once it does get rolled out.
Thank you for the preview of the work plan. As I was looking at the dashboard, the strategies, I think it's pretty clear how these fit in. The indicators, though, as they exist today, are almost exclusively tied to basically digital connectivity, digital outreach. Have you given thought to indicators that will support the new work plan items?
Yeah, I certainly have. It's, some of the difficult part in the communications realm is it's hard to put a number on those things. So, I have certainly given it thought, and I am working on it for sure. Yep.
All right. Any other questions, Board? All right. Thank you. We're on to the Board Committee reports. We had one meeting, the Board HR Policy Committee met on June 2nd. The meeting notes were attached to the agenda. Ms. Kolevitz, any additional comments or?
Pretty much covered in the meeting minutes, but we just covered three primary topics. The one was the cell phone policy and really the update on the legislation, which was the new piece on that. For press 118, we approved for posting some of the policies within that packet. Other policies are being reviewed by staff, and will come at a future meeting, and then the CAC bylaw changes that we approved. One thing I did want to point out on that is we had a discussion with the Chairs of CAC on term limits and if that needed to be adjusted, given the interest in CAC. And because of our new parent advisory committees, they were going to hold off on that. But the term limits were changed from a limit of five consecutive years to five total years. So, I think that is a helpful move.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports from Board members? I'm sure Mr. Rutledge has something to add.
Well, I just wanted to say that all the May, the graduation and honors ceremonies, they were all done so well. Congratulate everybody that was involved in organizing and carrying those out.
Thank you. It's a great, it's a great point. Yeah, graduation was great. The local building celebrations were fantastic. So, it was very much appreciated. Thank you. Any other reports, Board? Just also, just general comment. The, like, the student ambassador program, I really love. I mean, since I was on the Board, I, like, student voice was important. And I, as I attended a graduation party over the weekend, so I used to get the student voice when my kids were in high school.
Yeah, right.
You know, not, not as vibrant or live as what we have, but still, I felt kind of connected. So, it's, you know, really important and just, and to see how that's growing and how much interest, I think, is just really exciting. And same thing with these committees, you know. You know, we sometimes hear that we're not open or we're not, you know, for a lot of different things, and we are. And we all feel like we are. And this is just another avenue that kind of helps add some substance to that. So, I think these are also really positive changes to get us some more community input. Yeah, thanks, Dave. It's a great point, you know. When you look at the number of applications that come in, it's so encouraging, right? It's just fantastic. I love that we have that demand, for people that want to serve and play a role. So, thank you. It's a great point. Anything else?
Yeah, first, Dave, if you're not getting enough student voice at home, I'll have to invite you over, because I get plenty of student voice for all of us. With regard to the new parent committees, you know, we've got a pretty formal rotation to make sure we are in touch with and involved with the CAC. Dr. Schuler, any thoughts with the appropriate connectivity points between the Board and these other committees?
Yeah, not yet. I mean, I think we're still really at a point of just trying to get them launched. And I think that's certainly something we can explore as we look to next year. But no, we have not, in just all transparency, we haven't had that conversation on, like, board connection points yet.
Thank you. That makes me think of one question. With those, are they going to be subject to OMA, these?
They're not. They are superintendent committees. They're not Board of Education chartered committees.
Good. That's a good answer. Thank you. Just one other point I'll make is, I was joking with Mr. Rutledge, he is the most connected school board member in our community. He is, he is at every event, and he puts us all to shame. So, the reason I said, I'm sure John has something to say, is because I know you are just incredibly engaged and connected. So, thank you very much.
The adopted school program, in my opinion, is excellent. Gives us a chance, an excuse to get into the schools and find out what's going on there. And there's good stuff going on there.
Absolutely. But you're, you're a great beacon, man. I really, I just appreciate what you do. Thank you. All right. We have three written reports attached to the agenda. We have our monthly financial reports. We have our Freedom of Information Act report, and our Board Communications log. We have three topics for future discussion. We have the middle school capital projects update, the fiscal year '26 tentative budget, and the Vision 2026 work plans for school year '25 to '26. Are there any additional topics Board members want added or considered for future discussion? All right. Our next meeting is going to be on July 9th, 2025, 7 o'clock here at the School Service Center. And then, we're going to have a special meeting held Wednesday, June 25th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. here at the School Service Center.
Can I just make one, one comment on that, because it's not required, and I guess unless the Board kind of gives us direction, otherwise, that special meeting, this one, will be even shorter potentially than the last special meeting, because it's just one agenda item, the approval of the construction bids that come in. If the Board is okay with it, I would prefer not to ask Jason's crew to set up all the video equipment for literally a less than 10-minute meeting. We will publish minutes. All of the information will be available as it is, but that's considerable time and energy to set up all the live streaming pieces.
So, I had intended to attend remotely. I will be out of the country for business at the time. I don't want to force setup if we otherwise have a quorum. So...
We can take care of that. That would be separate from the live stream, because we can bring you in via a Google Meet and a computer and/or a telephone. So, we can, we can set up remote attendance for work. This would really just be more of the live stream through there.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Eric. Thank you. All right. There being no further action to come before the Board an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kolevitz?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.